Call to order the Village Council regular meeting. It's Tuesday, August 8th at 7:04 PM. We could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dan Kirk, did you call the roll, please?
Lori Bojo, President. Kelsey Cook.
Here.
Lauren Helman is absent. Allison Kemp.
Here.
And Jacob Nikasia is on the absentee.
So I know Councilperson Nikasia is on his way. I'll make a motion to exclude Councilperson Helman. Motion made by Cooks, supported by Bojo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, nay. Motion carries. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening? During the non-hold, move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion made by Cooks, seconded by Bojo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, nay, nay. Motion carries. We have two public hearings under item five. First is the repeal of Article II, Chapter 38, our food and food establishment ordinance. I've moved to open the hearing at 7:05 PM.
Support.
Motion made by Cooks, supported by Kemp. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The hearing is open. And Mr. Mador, do you want to give a brief summary of what we're doing here for the...
This came up when we considered the township's food truck ordinance. And I thought maybe we could move it into the food and food establishment ordinance. Then when I built it into the food and food establishment ordinance, it was outdated about forty years ago. And there really wasn't any way to save anything in it. So we thought it's best to just get rid of that. And then we then go forward with the truck and food truck ordinance. So this is why we did the first reading last month. We just want to get rid of it. There really was no aspects of it that were relevant anymore.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to speak for this public hearing? Seeing no movement, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:06 PM.
Support.
Motion made by Cooks, supported by Kemp. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Let the record reflect that Councilperson Nikasia has joined us. Okay, the second public hearing is ordinance number 420, the local food establishment ordinance. We'll move to go into that public hearing at 7:07 PM. Motion made by Cooks, seconded by Bojo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this public hearing is now open. And Mr. Mador, do you want to provide a brief recap on this one as well, please?
Yeah, we discussed this a little bit last month. We tried to, and requested the fire department to keep the ordinance similar to the one that the township passed. So a lot of those were just changing the Oxford Township to the Village Oxford in the ordinance. And then further on, under AC, we're going to take up that more conservative discussion of some of the things that we've looked at and we want to change a little more deeply.
Great, thank you. Okay, does any public wish to speak under the public hearing for the local food establishment ordinance by this time? Seeing none, I'll move to close the public hearing at 7:08 PM.
Support.
Motion made by Cooks, seconded by Bojo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Move on to item six on the agenda, call to the public. So you may voluntarily state your name and address, and please approach the podium if you wish to speak on a public comment. Anyone like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, item seven. So item seven A are our correspondence and department reports. I'll move to receive and file item A1 and 2.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Cooks, seconded by Bojo. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nay? Motion carries. Seven B is motion to approve the minutes, the bills, and other reports. And the bill's an amount of $274,788.21. Motion made by Cooks, seconded by Kemp. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Kemp? Yes. Nikasia?
Yes.
Bojo? Yes. Cook?
Yes.
And Helman is absent.
Motion carries. Thank you. So move on to eight, unfinished full business. Let's start off with eight A, the residential inspection ordinance. Mr. Mador?
Yeah, so this is what we discussed again last month. And I narrowed down, and I took what the council had come up with to add and subtract items from the inspection scope of Section 10104. Those items are highlighted in the draft in your packet. So the 100 amp handle service, proof of the date of inspection from the contractor for the heating system, no more than 180 days old. And you see those ones in there, about carbon monoxide, proper grounding, and electrical panel in the stairways being in sound condition. That was pretty much all we had as far as changes to it from what was there in advance. I think part of the discussion last month, and we talked to Mr. Davis since then, was do we want them to be the residential rental and inspection ordinance? Do we want to have the residential inspection and the residential registration ordinance? So we already had the registration ordinance on the books. And I guess that was kind of our discussion tonight, is do we want to keep them separate? And I think Mr. Davis has some thoughts on that.
Okay. Mr. Davis?
There, you know, it's certainly your decision. I think there are some benefits to having those two ordinances. Because I think some of the obligations and rights under inspection ordinance are different than the enforcement rights of under the registration, under inspection. You have to have provisions in there that address the case law from Ohio that I think called into question these types of ordinances. Because you have to have a due process in place when you're going to, when you're rejected from entry court process to get a court order to conduct the inspection. So I think the ending of the rental inspection ordinances differences drastically from the ending of what should be the registration ordinances. So I think you should have it as two. A lot of communities fuddle them together. It gets a little convoluted. But in your case, I think you already have one that's been enacted. It might be cleaner and easier for everyone if we just had another ordinance.
We talked last month about Terry can put these right next to each other so they're...
Yes.
To the...
Of the order?
Yeah.
I mean structurally within the ordinance scheme, have them close by.
Right.
Yeah, we can do that.
Do, so last month we met when I heard from McKenna, who did administration. Do any changes need to be made to the strap to the reflect we talked about with them managing it of the village?
No, the only thing this references, the fee. The fee is part of the fee schedule, which I did print out today. I think Terry did the capital I for fee schedule. I think you guys wrote a while back, you might as well. So it would be placed in the fee schedule.
We do have language in there that says, you know, the village and ordinance designate. So we can over-keep the designated ordinance scheme. That way, if you're commending the fee for your other ordinance, right?
Great.
Yep, Kemp?
In terms of the fees, I don't have a problem with what was presented with McKenna. What I would like to change was taking off the $10 village administration fee. That's our one small way of subsidizing it. I would be in favor of removing that.
Mr. Davis, the definitions of dwelling unit, which is A1 through a lot of letters and numbers to get to what a rental unit is, is there a way to reword that? Or is this kind of what we've had to land? It's just very, to me, it reads like a very indirect way to get to what is...
So good regulation, yeah.
Well, we battled on this during the registration. And I was a little bit hesitant talking to Joe to... I don't want the definitions under the new ordinance to be different than the registration ordinance.
This is within the registration ordinance.
But on the other hand, I agree with you 100%. We beat this up a little bit during the registration ordinance. I'm sure, you know, there were carve-outs because it's mostly a listing of exceptions, you know? We have a lot of exceptions in there. So we could revisit that and try to make it something. I'll do an after amendment back in the first ordinance as well. Because they have to be the same. We're going to call for you to register, it should be the same set of definitions as the inspections.
So rental inspection is dependent on the registration at the end of the day, right? So it makes sense to kind of get it registered and...
Right. I mean, the, yeah, the model goal of the program is we get, you know, we get everybody to register if they have a rental. And then we implement the inspection against that list. Are we ever going to get everybody to disclose, you know, their rental units? I don't know. But the inspection doesn't necessarily say we can only inspect those who register. I mean, if we determine that there's a rental unit, regardless of whether they're registered, we can still conduct an inspection, right?
Any other questions? Yeah.
I just wanted to speak to that, too. In the timing, inspection timing, you're talking about once they shall inspect a rental unit and later it comes as within sixty days of registration as required or as soon as thereafter as practical. So if we get someone to register, and we already got this program set up, it's still, it might be a year of people before we do that inspection. So even though it says sixty days in there, yes, McKenna will sit around, all call it up, and something came on, and they might be able to get to it soon. But in most cases, especially in the first couple of years, it's going to be, you know, a couple hundred, a hundred years, a hundred, fifty years, so before we can get all of them. But we do get them to crop up out of the woodwork a bit, you know? Somebody calls in, says, oh, I'm renting now this park, and we realize, or, so it was a great thing. Came on those guys buying rental minutes, and things like that.
And it's going to make sense to keep them separate then, because they'll technically be registered unless they have both of them, right?
Correct.
And we can't do all of them this year.
So what's the next step of the move to set up for our first reading?
We did the first reading last month. I remember this was the public hearing. We could do a second reading tonight, but we had to, we don't have it. This format, and I don't think probably the right number, so I'd have to adapt it, so...
I don't think we set up reading yet.
I thought we did the first reading on this, that one, no? Must have been the other one, the food truck.
Oh, yeah.
That's right, the food truck.
We could do a first reading tonight, and then we could touch up the language and bring it back to the second reading. I still think on the list of what is to be inspected, Joe, it still needs a little work, we need there. But I think the concepts are there for you.
Any other questions from council this time?
So we would just be moving to set it for a second reading.
For first reading?
For first reading, yes. Because we didn't do that yet.
Right.
Yeah, we're still formatting it. That way, we can have formatted, ranked numbers, sequence, and stuff.
And then we'll be able to show you where it will be positioned within this scheme.
So voting yes is just voting to allow a first reading?
Yes.
Correct.
At the next meeting.
Clear motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, to schedule the first reading for our presidential rental inspection ordinance number 418, Article 5, for the next regular village council meeting.
Second? Okay, motion made by Kemp, seconded by Nikasia. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Kemp? Yes. Bojo?
Yes.
Nikasia?
Yes.
Cook?
Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to B, food and food establishment ordinance, a second reading to repeal the Chapter 38 in its entirety. This was one of the steps for our public hearing just earlier this evening. And so now we're on the second reading. So I'll move to approve the second reading of food and food establishment ordinance to repeal code Chapter 38 in its entirety. Is there a cycle?
Support.
Motion made by Cooks, seconded by Kemp. Any discussion here? Questions? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Bojo?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Nikasia?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so now we're on C, AC ordinance 420, the second reading of the local food establishment ordinance. Let's get a motion on table, and we can discuss it a little bit further. So I'll move the second reading of the local food establishment ordinance. This is the one. Motion made by Cooks, seconded by Nikasia. And any discussion?
Yeah, so the copy in your packet, for the most part, the yellow highlighting was the change-ups in the articles we had already seen. We read text with things that I dove in deeper looking, thought we needed to address. One, right on the very front page, Section 1D talks about alcohol and liquor. They shall not serve alcohol, liquor, or allow consumption of alcohol in their service areas or dining areas. So again, my comment, there is a service or dining area in the Village Oxford Social District are deemed to have all appropriate permits for the consumption. So if somebody set up a grab cab, and, you know, they're in the area already. So I just think we need to somehow implement, maybe add that language in there. So that, so dining areas in the Village Social District are deemed to have all appropriate permits for consumption of alcohol sold by approved social district licensed businesses. I think this is the way, just kind of dot the back of that one.
So is that, that's basically, the restaurants are allowed to have their alcohol, sell their alcohol, and the food trucks are also allowed to have food in the area?
Right. Yeah, we don't want them to be, have policing their dining area. If their dining area is outside area, grab cab, if somebody wants a grab cab, it's sitting in the common area with an alcohol drink. That's not really a problem for the food truck. That area is allowed to have that happen already, like, by the state of Michigan. So I think just trying to make it a note that we moved that permitted, they're keeping all those permits in place. The other one on G, if you work your way down, let me step up. Some of the others are new, too. So the original one, the fire department was doing some of the enforcement of travel lanes and parking and road right-of-way and things like that in the township ordinance. And I think that might work for them, they have that wide area. But like, for instance, in downtown parking area where some of the food trucks might be, I think it's more appropriate to have the police department be, they already patrol the area. If there's an issue with somebody parking or a food truck blocking traffic, they're the ones I think they should be enforcing that, not the fire department. They're there, they're already patrolling. If somebody has an issue with it, I think that would have that do with the fire department. So that's kind of what I did on those next couple of ones, the service area and the dining area. And number D, prepping stories, the ordinance way was written. The food should not be prepared, sold, or displayed outside the mobile food establishment as set forth below. And then they had some caveats as to how it should be displayed in the shopping and stuff. I know for some of them, they come out and they unload, and they might have some stuff stacked outside. They're only going to be there for like four hours. And I don't necessarily think we have to prohibit them from leaving everything inside the trucks if they're only going to for short term. That's my personal thoughts. I don't know how you guys feel about that. One of them was a pizza, they were actually cooking outside of their, cooking in grab cab. It was kind of a pizza, it was a local place. So they would be prohibited from that if we adopted the way it's written. So I thought a way, if we allow them to do it for a certain timeframe, never allow it to be set up overnight, I don't know anyone that would. But perhaps. And especially when you think of like areas, this registration for the food trucks would cover places like the private beach out there, out from Lake Subdivision. They might have a food truck that wants to set up there for the whole weekend, just stay there, I don't know. They would be a violation of the ordinance, even if we take up the suggestion that I have, that they could allow to prepare themselves and stack it outside for no more than eight hours. They would probably pull stuff in at night. But the truck might set it overnight, perhaps, I don't know. They may have to leave every night to empty out, waste water, and refill. But I just didn't want to make them apt to be violating it on day one if their normal process is to have, they set up a thing outside and cook out. There's one north of town, I mentioned to Jack a while back, I see he cooks. Have a couple miles north of town, of course, they've done that. And I see they cook outside and stuff, and it seems to be, it's very popular, we guys have been there a while, it seems.
So would that cover, changing that language, would that cover, if it wasn't at an actual truck? If it was a trailer and/or tent situation?
The tent is only a problem with the fire department. You're not allowed to do any cooking under tents. They're not allowed to have even like potpourri candles and stuff, I remember, right? No heating, no open flames under tents. Now, unless, I don't know if the tent being flame resistant matters or not. And I know they're supposed to be flame resistant regardless. I don't know if that has anything to do with cooking. But that could be an issue right there that they have with the fire department. And again, if they go through the process and get inspected by the fire department, that may be one of the things the fire department can make sure that they're aware of. Hey, your truck is fine, your container is fine. Do understand that you can't, if you're set up outside, that you can't. Maybe they won't say that because the ordinance way is written, they're not allowed to set up and prepare outside. The ordinance is written, it had, everything has to be prepared, sold, displayed.
Do we know what the reason for that was?
No. And I apologize for not catching that the first time around.
Chief, do you remember?
I'm assuming we just don't want everyone camping out long-term and overnight, I would assume. And you want them to clean their...
Yeah, and you don't want it to look like it's just a disaster every drive-by either, right? Because they got foods and plates and stuff blowing around or something like that.
Business isn't partying at the end of the day, too.
Because, I mean, you're trying to keep the food truck being the food truck and consolidate the operations inside as much as possible, food truck. But you don't want to drive by and see the food truck and then five tents all around where over there they're cooking this, and over there they're cooking that. It begins to look like some big camping area or something.
Wouldn't that be permitted, though, under this, as long as they're not, they set up and tear down every day?
As long as they don't keep it like that overnight.
Where they come back. So if they have permission from the business owner every day, they can set up something that's...
And I only know of the one, well, the one north of town that I've seen, the one that came downtown in the area behind Grab Cab Pizza Joint, where she would literally set up her pizza oven thing outside and cook.
Yeah, they had to have the opener market, too, we have to stay there, so...
And so right there, if we adopted the way it was written, they wouldn't be allowed to do that. And so I was trying to find a way to allow that, but within reason. You know, we got a timeframe, you know, no more than eight hours. If you're going to be, something going on at the market from noon to eight or something like that, yes, they can set up and they can cook out here, but they have to lock this up and be gone.
Yeah, I mean, it's really not a food truck in my mind. I mean, I don't know if they consider themselves a food truck. It's kind of just like a mobile food business, like a pop-up. I don't know what's...
And most of them are something, they can do a cooking inside, that's the last thing. But some do have outdoors stuff. So that was just one of those things that I, okay.
We have a definite, license an operable motor vehicle or trailer, which includes any commercial kitchen equipment. So maybe that place we're talking about wouldn't even fall under this ordinance. So do we need to make kind of big changes? I'm just, I'm only concerned about changing it to, like, there's probably a reason why that was in there, but I don't know what. But it makes sense that there's a reason why it was in there. And if this tent business doesn't even fall within the definition of the ordinance, I don't know that I want to carve something out for them.
So, yeah, the way it was written before the strikeout, number G, letter G, one there is all materials, food, supplies must be stored within a mobile food establishment, or maybe adjacent to a mobile food establishment, dish in an enclosed container. So some would say, well, I have my supply, but I put it in a box.
Yeah, it just seems like that's good practice to keep, so I'm kind of leaning towards keeping it. Because I don't think they'd be excluded anyway. That's just my two cents. I don't know what council thoughts are, but... Because this really pertains to the motor vehicle or trailers with commercial kitchen equipment. That's not what I've seen. It's not food trucks around here. It's not commercial, it's not trailers, it's not that really. So this is the second reading, so we could make changes to that.
Or it's, and you could turn out the second readings to the next meeting.
Yeah, so that's why I just wanted to kind of go through some of the updates I had, so we're all aware of it and have a little discussion, and then decide which way to go, I guess.
Okay.
To me, eight hours is fair, you know? If we wanted to extend it to twelve or something, you know, we always could, but it seems pretty fair.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we don't need to put in eight hours. Because I think that we should just keep the material, food and supplies provision as it was.
So keep it tight in the truck.
Right.
That's why...
I was afraid of...
The spread.
A mess.
Yes, right. It begins to look like, I mean, we all know what a food truck looks like.
Right.
If you want, to the extent possible, everything to be contained in a food truck.
Yeah.
Allowing some storage of materials, if it's in containers, outside of the food truck.
Yep.
So who is making the call that say the pizza business is a food truck or is not a food truck and is not applicable under the ordinance? Because I think someone from the fire department would go check to see if they had approval. I don't think they're going to remain with distinction. It feels unfair to put them in that distinction.
Well, I think they are. Are you, I mean, if you, if you went to inspect one of these units, and it was just a tent with a pizza oven underneath it, what say you? She had an inspection license for the year, she has a...
She has one.
Yeah.
Okay. But it's not a food truck.
Trailer.
They do use a trailer, but they don't operate out of it.
Yeah, but their supplies are, so I think they're still under that classification.
Okay.
In my mind. I think it gets really, really sticky if we don't include everything. Because then you have somebody pulling up in a food truck and saying, oh, well, I'm just going to pop a tent, so I don't have to classify as food truck.
Can only cause it an STFU, Special Transitory Food Unit?
Yeah, that's the type of bags.
So that's like...
Definition and...
Truck, not truck kind of thing. So those are all kind of, I don't know, we should be calling it an STFU instead of a truck to match the state.
Yeah, because they have to get a permit from the local health department, as well as the type of bag that permit you're going to there. Most, like, all of them have to have, maybe some are exempt from that STFU one, but I'm not sure. But a lot of them have to have both.
What's that, Section 2B?
2A, actually. You know, the word 2 is the administration. It's the ordinance of administration by the fire department, chief, and it doesn't need. And I put "and" a little bit about it. Because that way, if for some reason the police officers rule by and something going on, they have the authority to, you know, interject as well. And or myself, or out there, and you see some blade going on. But I have not seen partly the force of administration. 2B is like the little one that for you. The mobile food permit, I just find it hard, the description of all the proposed events and description of all locations where the mobile food establishment will be parked, providing services, and where dining areas will be located, and net parking lot, how the service dining areas will be delineated for safety purposes. I suppose some of these might have regular officer, regular, they know events you're going to. But for them to show up and march and list every parking lot they're going to be in for the next nine months, seems like a tall task. I think we're fine with getting them, the permit, the signed completed application form, and then other stuff down, permission from the property owners, everything else in there, seems fine. But I just, I don't know. But the ones we're going to prove now, I don't know if they show up and list every event they're going to be at going out two, three, four months. That way, if somebody calls, says, oh, hey, we want you to come over here next week, they can't. I mean, I don't know if that would be something reasonable or not. The other thing, just adding ability parking, it would be, I mean, it's kind of like administration, under suspension or revocation, things that have been added, and that's in along with the fire chief's part. So we're able to see violations and do something about it. That's about it.
Well, how has it worked in the township? Come on. I think it would be good to hear how...
As Jack walks up there. My intention that the language was supposed to be the same, so we could, like, the approval would be interchangeable between the village and the township.
Correct.
And now we're messing with... And now we're messing with language.
The inspection is the same, though.
Okay.
That's mine, um, Jack, there was township supervisor, Oxford. First off, when you mentioned up north of town, we've been wrestling with that individual for almost eight months now. It is now a permanent restaurant, if you will, where they've brought picnic tables in, they're cooking and smoking of meat outside. In that ordinance, there is no time limit on how long a food truck can sit in an area. And I'm gonna suggest that you put that in your ordinance, as we are gonna redo our ordinance to add that. The outside cooking stuff, you can have a guy with a small pizza oven, or a gal with a big giant smoker, and they are cooking outside. So the intent of a food truck is not being met, you know, I can just throw up a tent and start cooking. It's worked real well, the biggest complaint is the inspection, we're trying to work with Oakland County right now. They go in, they get a health department inspection, and then they go to Oxford and get a fire inspection. Then they go to Orion, and they're required a fire inspection. Then they go to Matamora, they're required a fire inspection. So we're trying to get one tag fits all for the fire. The fire code is set by the state, and everybody has to follow it, but a food truck has to go to each individual community to get a food truck sticker that says, my propane tanks are safe, I don't cook under tents, these are the things that we're trying to commonize. They got north, he's emptying his waste into the septic of the building, he has now picnic tables out there, he cooks outside. So it's not working well up there, and he hasn't moved that trailer out of there in over six months, so we have no ordinance that says you can't stay there. But this ordinance, it, it works well, they just complained about having to get all of the community certifications from the fire department.
And our inspection, again, the fire department inspection is not changed at all, ours and theirs basically would play the same.
It's the same, you know, pizza park, been a fire chief, how long has it been the same? It's the state fire code that regulates, regulates the propane tank usage, the dates, the valves, and pretty much extinguisher dates on it, and that's about it.
So, Mr. Supervisor, you recommend that we do have a time component, because you're going to do that.
We, we are, we are, we are looking at it right now. I got a complaint as of Monday even, about now there's picnic tables and flower pots and all this stuff out there, and pretty soon he's gonna have a foundation in a commercial area, and it should be a restaurant.
So if, if all, if everything had to be put away, on a routine basis, that wouldn't happen?
Correct.
And you've got a smoker out there that's hot.
Hot, it's as big as this whole front row, it's got two hundred chickens on it today.
So, so, again, that being said, that's, luckily, that's not downtown. But I wanted to address the alcohol, the biggest thing we have is the alcohol part in ours, where they don't have social districts, we wanted to acknowledge that.
That works well, because like you said, you've got all the ones at Grab Cap, you've got here in the park, and they're all social districts. And they're not selling booze, they have to have a retail liquor license, you can't give one mobile, I mean...
I just want to make sure that they're not out for someone who's an alcoholic in their dining area.
Right.
That's adjacent to them, or they walk right up to the porter or taco, while they're holding a beer from a local establishment, so that's not, yeah. We have the knowledge just because we have that special...
We have no social districts, so there's never an interchange with alcohol and food in the public.
Yeah, the other ones are just pretty minor, other than the outside store one that I just wanted to about, and then my, what envisioned was the pizza one who actually cooks outside. I don't know if they can cook inside ever, or if they, if they're cooking outside, so, and for that reason, and it just so happened that I only seen that at Grab Cap Brewery, and Tom and Teresa Roble came in to see me specifically about some of this, can I send them this ordinance, just as a heads up, attempted to stick pizza in to them, because they know they both are involved with food trucks. And they have some concerns about that kind of language, or they have concerns about the hundred dollar fee, or if you want to quickly, it's two hundred dollar fee, putting inspections down. But that's their concern, so that's their perspective, I just bring it to...
From our perspective, if he's, that food truck is inspected by a fire department in Orion to the same standards as ours, all we're doing is taking their hundred bucks, and they're making them drag their trailer truck up to the fire department, charge them a hundred bucks, and they okay it, again. So we don't think that's fair.
Is that, is that something you think Jack will be remedied at the state level at some point?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're trying to bring it to a county level right now, at least, because we have Orion that has the same issue right now, and Auburn Hills has the same issue, so we're all under the same fire code.
And it's logistics, right? Because if someone lives twenty miles away, they're gonna have to go be up here in a month, they have to find time to drag their truck out here to make that appointment, to get it, to go back, and then they go, oh, shoot, don't forget, we're being Orion in two weeks, let's move in and get our inspection over there, so now they're dragging it around for just that, with purposes.
Right.
So, yes, if we found a way to...
The one truck you'll see is called the Food Dude, and he's really the sharp kid, an entrepreneur. And a lot of what we're doing now is based on what he sees. He goes to a community, you gotta pay a hundred dollars. Well, you gotta drag your thing all the way down there, and then drag it all the way back, and then two weeks later, you drag it down to your event, so...
After eight hours?
Yeah, after, yeah. But the time limit as sitting, you guys don't have that problem, most of these social districts are taking up parking floor with restaurants, if you will, but ours is out in the middle of nowhere, and he's serving all the industry in that area, and making a killing, but it's just, you now have set precedence with somebody that has a food truck that's almost got a foundation.
Thank you so much for your insight, I appreciate that. All right, if you want to come up, thanks.
Hey, I was gonna, I'm just a senior here, but, yeah. The Michigan Fire Prevention Society and Inspector Society have been working for the last couple of years through their, because they're obviously the ones that are doing inspections, so they're working, this is through the entire Southeast Michigan group, which is Macomb, Oakland, Wayne County, that are working on it, so that if someone down in Grosse Pointe sticks a sticker on it, does an inspection, sticks it, then the communities they go to, they would recognize that sticker, and it's good to go. So they are, it is in process, they have been working, so I'm not sure what's happened this year, but it's, they're working on it.
That'd be great, thank you.
All right, I was just saying, time, setting a timeframe makes a lot of sense for that, but I don't know if it necessarily has to be a single day.
Maybe, but no overnight, cannot be, that kind of thing overnight, maybe, I don't know.
You know, I'm wondering, like, we don't have a lot of events that go the whole weekend, but it doesn't mean we won't in the future. I mean, with the things, kind of, the DDA have been doing, like, what if we have some sort of event that lasts from Friday through Sunday, and somebody was like, hey, this is so difficult to leave, or I live two hours from here, what if I leave it on site? So, but, you know, my thought is, is that something we should consider having, like, a few days limit?
For instance, like I said, the beach up there, Oxford Lake subdivision, they might have a truck that stays there all day. Friday night, Saturday goes, you know, leaves at midnight or something, so they're there a day and a half.
Would that go into this ordinance, or is that like our special event application, or is it both?
Well, that's the other thing I mentioned in the memo, I think I almost sent you, because I forgot, I don't want to include in the packet.
It was a...
Oh, was it? Okay, good. In the past, when someone would talk about food trucks, our definition of a special event application, working for a concession truck, it kind of fell under the special event application required, so... But again, I, I've looked at it since that's come out, if it was on private property, if, you know, someone's food truck can be in the backyard or an open house, then it wouldn't be. If it was gonna be a food truck or a concession truck on a public property, the village property, then I would say, yeah, then you wouldn't leave this. And none of it had come through to that point and asked, but I've had inquiries, a lot of.
Yeah.
I think we would maybe want to amend the ordinance, it's not in the ordinance itself, the special event application, it was more than the paper.
So be able to think about this time component, and make it logical.
Yeah, I'd like to postpone the second reading till the next meeting, so we have a little bit more time to look at what's getting around.
That's an interesting question.
You're gonna run with the same, same kind of issue, I think, with people parking their trucks for certain periods of time, you know?
Okay.
So if council's agreeable, uh...
Do you have a motion to approve right now about your, are you, you getting a discussion going?
That's true.
Yeah.
I guess I, can I amend my motion that's on the table?
Or you could just rescind your motion, rescind the second and start over.
Okay, um, to move to rescind the second and to start over, is the cleanest way?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move to rescind the motion to approve the second reading, support, a motion made by Cook, supported by Camp. Can I do a voice vote for that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nay? Motion carries.
Now you can do a different one.
So then I'll move to postpone the second reading of the ordinance four-two-zero for the food truck, mobile food establishment ordinance, to the next regular meeting of village council.
Support.
Motion made by Cook, seconded by Four Joe. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any nay? Motion carries.
Question, so you say postpone, so are you, would you like us to try to have it together, and something in front of you for a second reading again next month?
Yes.
Oh, yes, that's our thought.
And I'll talk to you about it, because I just have some questions still. All right, so we'll move on to eight D, the crosswalk design at Vertic and Pleasant and at Pontiac Street, Oxford Elementary.
Okay, and I tried to encompass it in a memo I sent about the request for the second look, which, you know, part of the reason that was outside of our expectations on the scope and the cost were because the scope was enlarged, because I thought, well, that's bad, we should probably do that corner too, that was a little bit of a guess, so I did go back and give a chart of engineering intent, and reasons that they tried to skip, going back, maybe you might have a sample total survey done by Kennedy, he's gonna save some money as well. So, we're, we're gonna have a, a design engineering and a total survey for not exceeding a price of three thousand dollars. That was stressed to the order sixteen before. So I think that's more in mind, but when we talked about this, to our budget, we're shocked, I was estimating around ten thousand dollars. Not knowing that everything was, and I didn't have anything figured in for signage and striving and stuff, but just the concrete work and things like that, renewable. And so based on, I see the email from, I copied the email from Jim Sharp there, he's estimating it to be between twelve and fifteen for both locations. And again, that's, that was about thirty before, and again, the estimate was pretty high, and the estimate's our estimate.
Yeah.
But I think we should at least go forward to that price, if it's more reasonable now, get the design engineering done, get them updated, and see what happens.
Yeah, I think especially the crosswalk at West Vertic and Pleasant is necessary. Every day I see people running across the road there, and it's difficult with traffic, and so the crosswalk will really help just get everybody going in the same spot, just for drivers to be aware, pedestrians crossing there, so, um, just council, any questions?
Oh, yeah, I do, so this design, though, does not include, like, I guess, kind of like the push-button type lights or anything?
It'll only be the required markings on the pavement, and then the crosswalk signage, and that's what RDBW is buying and installing those. So that, his twelve to fifteen thousand didn't include that, because typically, RDBW buys and installs their own street signs, and so that would be done in-house. So it would include that amount, but, yeah, it would be the required signage right at the crosswalk, and I think it's a hundred and fifty feet back, or five hundred feet back, put down those numbers, we have to have the crosswalk head signage, one on each direction. The one on the south end would end up being out in the township, we'd have to deal with township and road commission, to do one coming northbound and Pontiac, south of the school. That'd be, had to be a collaboration, because if the crosswalk's written by OES there, by the time you have the warning sign back, five hundred feet, wherever you're up in the township.
Didn't you put this on a while ago, I remember Mike talking?
We talked about it, yeah, we, it was snowing, we were visiting the principal, that's how long we've been looking at this, it was probably either before or right after Christmas, it was, it was snowing, when we looked at this, on one, OES. But if we do put one there, the warning sign would be out in the township, we'd have to work with Jack and the road commission to get that.
And we have the other ones that we've been working on, they're gaining speed too, the ones on Lakeville Road, the goat path for Baypoint Drive and by Willow Lake there.
Yeah, those would be great additions, too, very much needed. Can we, when we request proposals, could we have them bed separately and together, so we only have budget to do one of the crosswalks, you can see? Would that be, I mean, is that gonna...
We could just say, listen, you know...
Break them up?
Break them up, say, give us your call for crosswalk A and crosswalk B.
You said, broken up.
Yeah, and then cross, and then both of them together, because they might give a better deal if you broke them.
Right, for mobile.
But, but then the village is also, in this price, the village is responsible for construction administration, as well as survey, or, I guess, commissioning afterward?
Um, the inspection, we may have to have Jim or somebody come out, like Jim said, Jim Wright, Jim Sharp, I mean, he could, if somebody knows ADA, they could go up and do the work properly, but I said, I wanted the designs, we have something to hold it to. We have something to go back and say, well, you know, you're, you're at two percent, and the maximum's one percent, on this slope coming down. So we need to have that place of design, and then we would then have to follow up, if it's not through one, I'm doing inspection afterwards, but that might be just a couple hundred bucks.
All right, I'll move to approve Sharp Engineering to perform the necessary survey and design work for the crosswalks on West Vertic and Pontiac Streets, that are not to exceed a price of three thousand dollars, and also direct the village managers to solicit proposals for consideration at September council meeting, as discussed.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Cook, seconded by Nicosia, any discussion? All those, or will do a roll call vote, please?
Camp? Yes. Nicosia?
Yes.
Four Joe?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes. Motion carries. Great, thank you. Mr. Director?
It's a tight timeline either for September, but I'll, it depends on the turnaround, the total, and then second, right?
Yeah.
It's mostly simple, but, uh, what you're talking about, getting bids right now is not easy.
Yeah, I totally agree, thank you for reaching out to someone else, too, and then to get the price down.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, so next is the key, our purchasing policy.
We have about a panel from, I think it was last month, it couldn't affect it, and lots of discussion, I think it can work. We talked briefly before the meeting, I know what other topics would be, the local preference, how you guys want to address that maybe in the future, and whether, I think it should be either instead of a shell, maybe an option?
Right.
I don't think there's other area about, would like to see the overall...
Yeah, I think we need to take a look at, you know, the categories of costs, you know, it seems a little bit outdated.
Yeah.
And, given some of the, you know, the legal impacts on, you know, the enforceability of bid processes versus RFP processes. Jack, you guys may be doing more RFPs now than you do bid processes. A lot of communities are, are doing more requests for proposals than they are sealed bid processes. It seems like, I told Joe and the clerk, that the three of us should probably sit down with the existing ordinance, and based on my, my analysis and all, and just bring you back a, a proposed new ordinance, a proposed new purchasing ordinance with, with what we think should be the more logical guidelines, no one knows what they should be more than these two, given the date of day of affairs. On the other hand, we, we do need your input going into that process on this, on some of the key factors, and one of them is that tag-along provision about assigning percentages, you know, based on, on local, local preferences. And I think we all know the history of that adoption. I think the percentages may be too high, and I think maybe it, maybe it could be something, that could be a May standard, that you reserve the right to do that, but not shall do it.
Would that only be when you're, when it's like a sealed bid process?
Yes.
Because otherwise you can choose, based on other factors, so...
Right, so, so I think, I think we need to do some of that for you first. Get to a re-trafted, proposed purchasing ordinance.
My thought is not to have a local preference, because I'd rather get whoever's the lowest bid, that's who wanna go for it, getting our constituents the best price. So favoring the people paying for it versus favoring the little business, that's just...
Yeah, I mean, in some instances, when the number's large, you know, you take a, a large project, and you're, you know, you get a fifty thousand dollar swing that you're funding just because you're gonna pay, you know, the lower the bidder.
Right, yeah.
I would like to see as lower the percentages, as well as adding a cap, to how much? Say, three grand, maybe?
A cap on the impact?
Yes.
Like a 5% and no more than to exceed $50,000 or something like that, or a 5%?
So not to exceed an extra, a capped amount of money to the, to the villagers. In other words, not to exceed the number that we would have to fund because we're employing this, this preference.
Uh, my thought is that bare minimum, we need, we need the ability to override, and maybe like a majority vote to override that provision in the ordinance. Just because, like, my thought is, is that obviously if it's a local preference, they are constituents, and we wanna make sure that if at all possible, we can keep the business local, right? If, if, if it's, if it's a local company, local, local folks doing it. But I think that in that, we have limited funds, and, and we're also responsibly, we have to, we have to spend that money responsibly, so we have to figure out a way to do that. So I like the idea of a cap too, as well on that.
Mr. Supervisor, do you wanna step up?
This is good fun, on the first night here.
Joe, when I.
Do you know your name?
I made a deal with Kelsey, she can start coming to mine, I'll start coming to hers, that's what happens. Contrary to your statement, we do all bids. You do? Yes. It takes all the, it puts all the integrity into the bid, and we take the lowest number. But we have the first rate of refusal on any bid. If a local is $5,000 off on a $500,000 project, we may take the local, but we go for the lowest bid. Safety path at the high school was just under bid by 40,000. So, you know, we have to go with the lowest bid. Our procurement policy that we enacted says, you seal bid everything, there's no chance for any sneaking around, any backdoor deals. It just keeps integrity in it, and the bottom line is, you're in the same one. Jack, do you qualify it perhaps, that we take the lowest? Qualified? Qualified and responsive bid? So you get, you get a, you know, you're asking for marbles, you get oranges? You're not gonna get the bid. Right. We, what we do is at the bid opening, we declare everybody's price, and then our engineer goes through all the references, and then goes through all of the bid sheets to make sure the money, the dollars are spent and called out correctly. A lot of times they'll miss inspection days, a lot of times they'll have 28 tons of 21 double A, and it needs 60, and have a year under there, and we won't take that bid. But it gives other people the opportunity to look at the bid and say, that's the best bid for the best price. Do you have a threshold where you do sealed bids? Do you have a number below that where you just get quotes? Usually about $10,000. I mean, I have the authorization to do 3,500, but between the three of us, we could do close to 10 grand. And we just, we're gonna repair the boardwalk on Drainer Road in front of the Blue House, it's got the small boardwalk. Well, the guy came out there and looked at it and said, you know, for $9,200, I can replace that. Well, by the time you go through a bid, somebody gets hurt walking on boards with nails sticking out of it, it's not worth the time, we just award the bid. The board still approves that expenditure of money before it's spent. So, glad to have your wealth and knowledge, so I ask you one more question. Do you have a situation in your ordinance where you waive the bidding process because it's a sole source provider? Uh, no. So let's say we were working on our water plant, and we've, we've got all XYZ valves, and we need a new XYZ valve, and it's important, you know, to our schematics that we use the XYZ valve. So we only are gonna go get an XYZ valve, we're not gonna bid out the valve. Do you have any exceptions for that? No, because you can buy XYZ valve, and any certified XYZ valve installer can do it. One might do it for 100, one might do it for 1,000. So you bid it out, you find out. And with the retention of, you have first rate of refusal, you can still say, not qualified, not certified, got a better response time. We can get something done in 20 days versus 90 days. That may be a qualifier, to say we want it done now, and we're willing to pay that difference. And if you, if you only have one bidder? We have one right now. One bidder? One bidder. And we're stuck on it, we're. Probably the lowest. It's, it's not the lowest. So you have situations where you don't get a lot of bids? And currently, right now, we're budgeting those funds based on then, the single bidder's number, and then we are going to rebid it again. And what we do is, all of our bids go out on Mitten, M-T-I-N, you know, the website. Right. And we sometimes advertise it in the Oxford leader, because we know there are locals that are competent and can do it, but not always. But Mitten is our, our primary source.
Our threshold's 25 grand for sealed bids, and again, Row goes through the same thing, bid tabs, public opening, you calculate all, you know, pricing and all that stuff applied to us. That's what a lot of bidders who are second, third, wanna see, because they wanna see the guy beat them out. What's their hauling rate, what's their tonnage rate, what's their asphalt rate, you know, they get that bid tab right now. But yeah, it's 25 grand is our threshold for that process.
Gotcha, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
No, it's very helpful.
I really, I like the township approach, I do like.
I, I gotta tell you.
Especially with the sealed bid, it does give you the integrity, and people are gonna try and give their best price without seeing what other people are bidding or things escaping, so. Obviously, those exceptions are good to the threshold services, that's really different.
That's our only exception for that, for those, it's not a threshold. The 25 grand are sealed bid thresholds.
So if that helped, maybe we can get you something.
Yeah, I'm still not thrown with the local preference, but we can talk about that further, if you wanna put something in there, and then we can talk about it with the cap.
We don't have local preference. And it's brought up a lot. I think what, and people favor it, I mean, people want it or don't want it? Well, for 40 grand, I don't care if you're local or.
That's why I don't like.
That's what we're saying, that, that's exactly right.
When else, now we're talking today.
You're gonna spend 40,000 more just so you can be local?
You could do 5%, but no more than 3 grand.
Right, something small.
5% on the.
Still, when our budget is like, so low, I mean, we're debating that in crosswalks for $10,000, so it's like, we need every dollar.
So you employ it by discretion, you know, you just say, look, you know, this guy's 1,500 off on a $75,000 project, let's go local.
And you gotta do the opposite too, when you, when you got a safety path out there, your engineer estimates to be 275 grand, so make sure it's about 120. You can't go with that bidder.
You're, you're, you're.
They missed something.
What, what's wrong with that bid?
Yeah, they missed something.
Oh yeah, there's always something.
Yeah.
You're gonna end up paying more.
Yeah. Or get, have to do with nothing, and.
And you'll have to pay.
Mess. They go belly up, you're left in a mess.
Usually a legal mess.
Yeah.
That's my.
Thank you, thank you so much, appreciate it all.
Any other questions? I'm gonna key that from Council before we move on. Okay, so we'll look for something on the picture on that.
Great, great, that's a good one.
Thanks for all your research on that too. Okay, next up, Mr. Wackel.
Thanks for joining us.
Glad to be here. Well, we're not, Dave Wackel, anyone watch, oh, yeah. We're not as far as we wanna be. I don't like to place blame, because it comes right back at me, but we are still having problems with Detroit Edison. And I did meet with Kelly and Joe on the site, and I think we had a misunderstanding with the lights. It's not the parking lot lights, it's the Edison poles, that's our issue. We have one that's in the parking, right on Vertic Street, has to be removed, so that can be finished. We have the anchor lines that come into the sidewalk, right by 19 Stanton, that's where we were standing. Pointing around, there's no pole there, it's one on the drawing, well, there is not a pole, the pole is existing, but the anchor lines had to be moved. And only Edison will do that, I guess they're like 28 feet deep, they have to be within 10, 12 feet of the pole. So we can't do that sidewalk and entrance exit ramp into the parking lot. And the other two, Linda, the planter Linda Lee, she wouldn't design the program until I had the east parking, or the east parking line staked again for her. So she knew exactly where it was, so I had that done within a week in May. And here we are now, we still don't even have the contract for that work, even though she said she was gonna send it to me last month. And I had hoped with contacts that, you know, were offered, I would see it. I did finally get a text from her today, after I texted her at 6 o'clock in the morning, that's when she starts, she works 6 to 2. And she said she would get it back to me today. And again, I didn't have it, so I don't know, I couldn't tell if she meant set or send, I showed Joe the text. Corrected? Yes. I'd be welcome, I'd share it with everybody if they wanna see it.
Is that who's Linda?
Linda Lee is the DTE planter, well, she's very excited about, because she was the first one out of five we've had on that project that looked like she was gonna get ran out of, get it all done for us. I still have the, the work, the original work order and the drawings that were done, I think it's 2019, done a while ago. And I said, just use this work order and change the date, you know, nothing's changed. Parking lot's the same size, the poles are the same place, and one of the asphalt contractors wanted those put in before, and I understand why, because the trucks will tear the grade up. But as far as the parking lot lights, what we do is we put our solo tubes in ahead of time, and we run conduits between them, and then set the poles on after it's all graded and paved, and the landscaping's done, and makes it all pretty. But that, that's done, not through Edison, that's through us, actually.
So the Edison angle, and I think we did talk about the one out in Vertic in the parking space.
Yeah.
Which isn't, doesn't affect the footprint of the parking lot.
Does not, but.
It expects the process, I get that.
Well, it, it does not accept that it's in the string of poles that has to be moved to feed the house on the north side of Vertic, which is fed from our south property line, our southeast property line now, just completely rerouted or taken. But there's four poles that are being taken up, put in two new poles to feed that house, and it's only a house that's on it. It can't come from the other direction, because the Steve's landscaping business is in the way of any overhead lines. Can't go through his property underground or through his building, so there's only the one route. But I'm expecting one other bid yet this week, and I don't think it's fair to make that public knowledge, but I'm hoping that they're gonna be flexible, and they could do like the whole east side, all the curb and gutter. And then we clean it up that way, and then the west side where we can't do it is, I don't know, wait? I don't, we could do all but about 12 feet probably.
Yeah, I was gonna say, right there where that pole is, right?
Right.
Where one parking lot transitions to the other.
Right. Yeah, and I suppose we could just take the wire down on the pole that's in the pavement, leave the pole.
Anchor wire?
Yeah, well, no, not just the anchor, you know, the one that's in the parking base. Take the wires off it and leave the pole, and they can come get it later, or we could just take the jeans off and take it down.
But as far as the footprint of the parking lot, of the, all but about that 12 foot on the west side could go over now?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
And, and you're hoping to get another bid this week?
Yeah, I, yeah, I expect it, I, he confirmed last week, so.
So would that be an option, you would like to do that, if, if that bid went back, and you'd like it?
If he's, if he's amicable, I think he will be.
12 foot?
Yeah. And even the first bidder, I think might be amicable now, after there was some more conversation. He was very rigid originally on how he's gonna do the project, and I said, well, I don't, I can't do some of this areas. He said, well, we have to charge you, remobilize, and it's gonna cost you this and that, and I said, you know.
You're local, you're not far away, where's the mobility?
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, and they typically don't get it done the same day they're there anyway, and typically they get, everyone just seems to get pulled off on another job, right in the middle of your job, because you have to finish up one, and they're under a type free constraint, you know. Our industry is not a lot of fun a lot of times. And I do like bid process rather than a request for proposal. There's no doubt what you're bidding that way, rather than, and the other side of that is, request for proposal, to me means, okay, they're just asking you for information. They're gonna gather all the information, create their own bid for proposal, or a bid which you may not get it off in a request for proposal, they may hold things back. There's a lot of, there's a lot of ways to look at it, so I, I agree with Jack, how they do it. And I don't know how Oxford got to that 10% level, I know it's not often, I should have probably talked last item. When I was involved on the boards here at Oxford, I remember it being 5%, I don't know if it was ever, it was 10%, that's a lot.
5% of the village, seven of the township, five of Michigan, three of the US, I think it would be this.
Is that what it is? Yeah. Yeah, well, I'm following closely, but anyway, that's where we stand. I still want it done, you know, this fall, so.
So if the other bid's in, and it's amicable, you could go forward?
Yeah, I'll sign it, and I think that, I've already talked to him about the crushed concrete or asphalt millions, he said, no problem. They, they stock asphalt millions and crushed concrete, we just have to get the MDOT certification from where they buy it from. I think that's what you said would have to be required, and then it may be even faster.
Kemp, question?
Mr. Wackel, I would like to hear an update from you at council, everyone that is from here on out. What can we expect to see accomplished before that's once meeting?
I don't know, I can give you a list of things I'd like to see done. How about if I give you results, if you, if you don't go by, I guess. I mean, I've been trying to get the front of the building landscape now for two months. Drawings were completed and submitted to the building department, they weren't approved because the feature was two inches too high, based on our ordinance, in which I told landscaper that, they haven't revised their drawings.
I suppose I was asking particularly in terms of the parking lot.
Oh, okay. So what you'd like to, you'd like to know before the next meeting, that's in what, two weeks?
No, a month from now.
Months from now. Assuming that they could mobilize and do it, I'm assuming the curb and gutter is gonna be done on the east side, and the entrances, which have already been poured, are all tied in.
I know that, now, we have residents on the very east side of the property, is that correct?
Well, there's residences on east and the west.
I guess in terms of the, the fence that's there, can I, I guess, can you kinda talk to me about the plans for?
Yeah, that plan, that fence is going to come down, and our landscaping has been approved to put two rows of arborvitae. And there are special kind of arborvitae that are very thick at the bottom, so it makes a very dense fence. They will not be arborvitae's like Pleasant Street, that were four foot tall and about 12 inches in diameter. These will be actually trees that need taking care of.
And they're all dead now?
They were, most of them were dead, we never put in.
Yeah. Because we don't wire them.
Well, we got the DDA, you know, just as a side, the DDA's been really good about going around water and plants. I know they did it 20 years ago too, we had one DPW employee that, that was his job, whole job, I think his name was Keith. Remember that kid? Was his name Keith?
I don't remember.
Everyone wants us all to make it, come on. Anyway, he was, his whole job was downtown maintenance. He cleaned the streets and sidewalks, flowered the, you know, watered the plants, and did a lot, did really good for two or three years, and that was discontinued for whatever reason. And that was discontinued for whatever reason.
We have at least, we have an, we have basically the same each morning, every morning.
Yeah, I mean, I see it. I do, I see him out every morning, you know, taking care of everything.
There is no fence in the plan on the east side. Oh, the plan, the site plan has proved there is no fence over there. It is a green wall, that's the arborvitae stagger.
Right.
That fence was put up as a temporary picture to give a better look when they were having a look on to the open construction site.
Right. And I think, and you know, that's kind of my, my asking a little bit as well, too, is just the general, with their property being right there, you know, and having the construction for quite some time, I guess, what's the general timeline for doing that? Is there any way to speed getting that set up?
If there was a way that I could have stopped COVID for one thing, that'd be one way. That was a huge hindrance for not just the parking lot, but for our business. Not just our business in Oxford, our business everywhere. I don't know how else I can speed it up. I talk to people every day and every week. Detroit Edison and Linda. I refrain from calling her boss because my licorice should call her boss. And she, she did call back the next day, but she was a little spoony about it. Wasn't, didn't like, didn't appreciate it.
The fact that you might do the EOM site in Earth Peak, I don't want to touch on bringing it on all of it. Though if you could definitely do the east side curb and gutter, then that would be, the part between the curb areas over to the east properties could be then finished.
Yes.
So that would help accelerate the finishing on that east end. If the east side parking lot, also the curb and gutter is done, that's the last final touches, except perhaps if the light bulb come in later. But the landscaping then would be able to be done.
It would, it would look a lot better.
Yeah, especially from the dumpster out to Verde.
Right.
Then that area that's the most.
Yeah, that, yeah.
And I'm really asking just because, you know, we have a property owner there as well, too.
Yeah, I know. I know. So I've talked to him many a time.
Well, hopefully the other bids are using good bids and you get it grown and it all works out.
I sure hope so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I don't really want to get into like any kind of back and forth right now. So if you want to talk during public comment or after, yeah. Let's put a new business, a rezoning recommendation from the planning commission for 25 Dennison Street.
Okay, the recommendation and review that McCann provides to the planning commission is in your package. And the result of the planning commission was their recommendation to approve the method master plan. There was a couple folks there that night who just didn't like it for various reasons. Increased traffic, one up and down the street perhaps. But it did meet, if you go up to Mario's letter, he did a very thorough review letter. So I think in my mind, the planning commission did the correct thing in granting the request because it did meet the master plan and all the criteria. And just today, the one that was on your desk today from Emmanuel Church, this was planned to deliver to our office this afternoon. So there was input from them that I had sent on your desk. Now, as part of your package, it was there, it was on the folder. They were also there, just were there at the planning commission meeting as well that night. Spoke on behalf of the church.
So the planning commissioner is recommending approval?
Yes.
Any questions or comments from council?
Council, you generally have three choices. You can accept the recommendation, reject the recommendation, or send them back because you need further information.
Thank you.
And Mario indicates those points in one through six at the very end of that, his letter. Consistency with amended village Oxford future management plan, consistency with the 2016 near west side development plan, and various other items that the review against.
Help me out here because I didn't get a chance to drive over there. The parking lot just north of Dennison, that's obviously behind Centennial Park. And then the properties.
It's a corner Hudson and Dennison.
Yep. So what's zero four two, is that residential or is that those businesses? Those are businesses, right?
Right here. Just, just north of that, that's.
Just north of that red dotted line, that's the financial services business.
Okay.
Yeah, zero four twenty seven two oh two oh three eight, that's the property. Yeah, that's nineteen or twenty thousand, I think it is, something like that. Nineteen or twenty, maybe twenty two. That's that financial service facility.
And so the area in Brent, is that like, that's a single family home right now? That they want to make into the business?
Well, they want a rezon. There is no plan for what their future plans or use are. But if you look at the page below that, there's the outline area, the future land use map. It's actually indicating that both sides of Hudson at the Dennison intersection are eligible for that type of rezoning.
So this is a straight rezoning, this was not a contract conditional rezoning?
Yeah.
Where you would no use?
No site plan, no providing, just future land use recommendations.
They can do whatever is consistent with the new zone.
Yeah.
Got you. That helps. Thank you.
Which zone does allow for some residential use? Makes use of things like that.
Right.
Business on the first. Residential upstairs perhaps?
I'll move to, Dr. Pro, the planning commission's recommendations to the rezoning of 25 Dennison Street from Harrow One Single Family Residential to the C1 Transition zoning district. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that a solution?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Okay, any discussion from council? Questions, comments?
I mean, obviously if somebody wants to turn this into something, we still have to go through.
Yeah, any, any, any use that would require amendments to the building or the footprint of the building or any development would be a site plan. It could be, again, switched over to a, an office on the first floor and residential upstairs without having to move site plan approval because if they're not modifying the building. But if they wanted to add on the building or if they wanted to knock the building down, but to do all of that, all those would go to the site plan approval process of the planning commission.
How does this affect the property directly to the east? Because it's still residential, right?
That would be his family.
Makes her into a Thanksgiving.
Well, I, it doesn't affect, it doesn't affect or change anything until there's a change of use at a site. Right? And we don't know if there's going to be a change of use. And if there's a change of use, we don't know what that might be. Right now, he's saying, look, I see on the future land use map, the village is recommending or planning and guiding this towards this type of transition. I think I'd like to move it over to that right now and then I assume, see if my options are down the road. This could be something simple, as this was discussed at the planning commission. I have not discussed this through the app, you can hear all about this. Let's say the houses were 200 way sits. You said that the commercial houses were 250. I don't know.
Right.
It could be something now, it's the only better market to sell it better. We don't, there's no proposed use.
Yeah. We don't care really, I guess, either. So I'm just curious.
I'm not, I'm not sure if I have.
Do you want to come up with one?
By the way.
Yep. Thanks for attending the meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. My name's Robert Joel Guy. Thank you again for having me. I'm the property owner over there. I just wanted to bring up just a few points that I had, just for you guys to consider. Of course, it went away every night. Came up very well. Some of the points are already made, but the main reason is the master plan does call for that property in particular to be rezoned to a C1 transition into the future. So that would be the first piece. I'm not going to get too deep into it. But the next piece would be physically located in the middle of C1 Business Core District, which would be kind of that parking, I would say it ends, even on the maps, it ends right on our corner. And then residential would kind of start across the street, across Hudson, across the other side onto Dennison there. So we're kind of on the corner there. My personal opinion is the way they designed C1 transition, I would imagine that's probably exactly what they designed it for, to go from heavy commercial to buffer to residential, which is physically exactly where we're located. The other thing that I would just add is the properties to the north was also previously just a single family home that was rezoned to C1 transition years ago. So just kind of trying to follow those footsteps as well. And that's kind of my two cents about the proximity and just kind of that little situation on the corner. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Makes sense. Any other discussion from council? Okay, do a roll call vote, please.
Yeah, yes. Porjo?
Yes.
Nikosia?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Nine B, Oxford Lakes Labor Day weekend fireworks display or permit application?
It's an annual.
I think this is an annual.
Yeah, a repeat, repeat. Had they, had their feedback on the fire department yet?
No, I thought that's why you were getting the call from Vijay today.
No, it was something else. They haven't got, well, Chief was on vacation last week. Vijay was on vacation, I think, for two weeks. So he just got back yesterday. So the normal process, though, we've obviously improved from the fire department before it happens as well.
I'll move to approve the application for the 2023 permit for fireworks for the Oxford Lakes Labor Day weekend to be held on Sunday, September 3rd, 2023, with the rain date the next day on the 4th. That's presented, subject to the fire department approval. And I think that's it. Support? Motion made by Cook, seconded by Porjo. Any discussion?
Any Eagles this year?
No, that was a pretty big issue.
Yeah, that was, good. Okay, any other discussion question? Okay. Any of those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, nay, motion carries. Thank you. Nine C. We have a resignation from one of our planning commissioners, Michelle McClellan. So she needed to submit her resignation and she still attended that last meeting, which was very kind. But Michelle's been, you know, dedicated to our community for a really long time and has served in various positions and has been a great advocate for Oxford. So I'll move to accept the resignation with regret for Michelle McClellan from the Village Planning Commission. Sort of. Motion made by Cook, seconded by Ken. Any discussion? Did receive a application for a potential new planning commissioner. So I'll show you, do some contact and maybe that'll be on the agenda for next time. So that'd be great. But yeah, thank you to Michelle. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, nay, motion carries. Nine D, appointment of council member to the ZBA.
What was that, I see the planning commission member from here and, I think, I don't know if you can. In some cases you can. Michelle, she's on the ZBA too.
Michelle was the representative from the planning commission to the ZBA.
Yes, the planning commission wanted to figure out who their representative is.
Do we know when they meet?
Very rarely. Once a year, if you're lucky. There is a meeting next month, which is why someone needs to be appointed tonight. And it's going to be like September 11th.
It'll be early.
Yes, but it's, and it's not a complicated meeting either, so it will be quick.
I would be willing to volunteer.
Okay.
Wonderful, if you need. Yes, we'll take you, thank you.
So I'll, you know, you, my ZBA trademark back, so I give it to ZBA number two.
I still have to name an owner box with your name on it right here.
You are planning this, but I already know the due date.
Is there a term ending on that, Terry? Or is there a term ended?
It coincides with his, his.
Same with the council.
So that's.
Is it an end of next year?
Right.
Yes.
Not that he goes here.
Because he took over Ashley Ross's term.
So I'll move to appoint Jacob Nikosia to the zoning board of appeals for the village of Oxford, term ending the end of 2024.
November.
November, November 24. Okay, motion made by Cook, seconded by Ken. Any discussion? Thank you very much for volunteering.
That'll probably be the only meeting you have.
Nice one.
Hopefully as well.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, nay, motion carries. Okay, E, the 2024 letting cover rules, work plan, Dennison and Park Street, customised.
So the map in there is the map we put together a couple of years ago and we sent it out to all the residents about where the newer water mains are that only have work to be done, replacements from the curb stop into the home. And then the red water mains on that map represent the water mains that are old, outdated water mains that will be replaced in full, including the land connection at the water main over to the curb stop and from the curb stop into the home, which is what we did last year on Hudson-Tennison. The green squidly line had come down Hudson and Dennison out to 24. That was my attempt to overwrite on this PDF. That's the work we did last year. So we talked about perhaps even doing a stretch of, so that line comes down or that's the corner of Hudson and Dennison. If you took at that intersection, go west one block to Pontiac, that's the pricing we have to complete Dennison over to Pontiac. The other street right below that is Park Street, where it goes from mechanic all the way to west to Pontiac. Those are the two areas that we translated and do in 2024. They're different lengths, they're obviously different costs. So that's what's been prepared for you by the road attorney in regards to those costs. So we can make a decision as to which one we'd like to do in 2024. So there's pricing for the water main work and there's pricing for the road construction that is obviously required to tear up and replace the water main. The Dennison mount, if you look on the back, okay, the total. Dennison, the shorter mount is estimated at 445,000. And then the Park Street from mechanic to Pontiac at 821,000. That's the essence and course, you know, there's a 20% contingency in the road work. Obviously, all the water main work and water service land work, I think, is covered by the waterfront. A portion of the road work is covered by the waterfront, too, because you need to tear up the road. It's just that portion that remains that you wouldn't have to do necessarily, that the road fund has to cover. So if a third or half of the road work, Dennison perhaps, let's say, it's a 180,000. So about half of that would, could be covered by the waterfront and the other half would be covered by the local road. The bulk of it is paid by the waterfront, but there's some of it does have to be covered by the rain fund because you don't want to just pay half the road price, neither half of it is.
Yeah.
We had that unexpected kind of issue last time. And I, I'm pretty sure I've asked you this 12 times already, but we, that's the only place we anticipate having something like that happening.
Well, I'm not sure if I remember what exact issue. There was many issues on that project. That's a large project, right?
We wanted something in the middle.
Well, that was, yes, and that was the part from the exit of the 951 building.
Yeah.
That part out M24 that didn't require work because it was a water main there. But we did it because it didn't accept all this work, the 150 foot old nasty road bed. So when we got into that section, that's where we found a really bad and collapsing drain structure in the road that required to be replaced and stuff that we didn't kind of figure it in. But when you're digging around old streets and old structures, we kind of accepted that. And then as we cut across the parking lot of Hudson over to three south, which was, had to be reconnected because it was done in an odd way. Those old septic tanks and stuff, it was buildings in that parking lot years ago. So those are those things we kind of expected. These projects, either one will be much simpler. There's very little curb and gutter work, only at the intersection, the A B ramp would be, their back curb down the coast side, it would be a little bit aggric for a few feet on each side. These would be a lot easier. That was a very difficult job, the closing of the entrances, the paving of the entrances in the parking lot, alternating the ins and outs, that was very difficult on the contractor. My suggestion would be to do the lesser one next year, to wrap up Dennison. Dennison is done then. We did the work on Park Street at the end, west end of Park Street last year. That was not involved anything other than it just needed, really needed, right? It wasn't bothering work, so that was over and above.
That would be that right there, right?
No, west. So you're going north and south there.
Oh.
So that, from that point there, where they, where they had gray line that we did last year, right where it comes down, that gray line that comes down and turns. right where it comes down, that gray line comes down and turns to the right, go left there over to Pontiac. I should have put it down on my sheet, but...
So this part?
Yep.
Is this part in the park pricing or is that something we consider?
That's how we, that's how we north and south.
That'd be something entirely separate.
Entirely separate, right?
Thank you.
So the east-west on Denison, are we gonna do the, I guess, the street at the same time for, from the road funds or is that...
Yes. So again, of the road work, and you tear up the road, you put in a new pipe, and then you cut across the road to run lines across that side. A lot of that work is covered by the waterfront, because the water action and activities are what's causing the damage. There's some left over along the side that you can't use water funds on, because that's just, you don't want to leave it that way, right? You don't want to take two-thirds of your road and repay it, leave a third of it junk.
Right.
So that left over part has to be covered by the road fund.
And we have enough... For I guess, does the budget include the road fund in there, this price?
Well, so none of these are in our budget currently, because the budget, these won't take place until next summer. We would like for them... One of the things that we would possibly do though is amend our budget, because to order ductile iron pipe right now, it's six months out sometimes. So it's something that we went, if we decide and get a spec out, we obviously don't know the length of the pipe we need. We can order that pipe in December or November, get it bought, paid for, sitting at the pipe suppliers. So we know when we're ready to go in June, May, June, July, whatever, next year, that we aren't going to be suspended by the pipe. We had a long wait on fire hikers on the last project as well. It was over six months for the height of fire hikers. We didn't want to switch brands, because we wanted to have them the same throughout the village. So, yeah.
And the duty's short.
Yeah, the issue. Newer, we could have been newer, right? If it were a brand, we could have got sooner, but that would have been a change, change of connections, change of rents. So another thing we may need to, there'll only be a couple of hikers perhaps. We may want to order those and pay for those in advance as well.
I have a couple of questions. So these, because there's lead goosernacks, we're replacing the whole line into these people's houses.
Yes.
So it's gonna, there's gonna be a new water main down the road, new road on top, and the service line connecting the water main into their house will be pouring through the basement wall.
Yes.
And then replacing all of the landscaping and everything else that we've disturbed.
Yeah, and...
And that's, we've had a contractor.
Yes, and very little, I mean, he's very good. I mean, there's some work out front that he will doctor up and smooth out, and RDBW comes in and breaks it clean and cedes and has worked well. I don't think we've had to place any sidewalk or any bushes to date.
Oh, that's lucky.
Yes, he's very good at it.
But they are on the road for us, right?
Yes. Any other restoration that we, you know, he works, he does his best to work around those things to minimize that impact.
So for Denison, we're gonna be doing 10 lead service line replacements. Park, we're getting 19, so essentially double.
Basically, what I did, I took the area and I didn't verify, someone may have already had one replaced from the curb stop into the home line on a few years ago. We don't know. I can go back and pull up a permit. But I looked at all of them as all four replacements.
Right, okay.
A couple of those might fall off, but I would...
And then would we need to... How are we gonna pay for this? Do we, are we gonna bond it? Or is it like a loan? We have the money?
No, we have the money.
Do we need to increase the water rates to keep paying for these things? I kind of want to do the Park Street, just because we're getting more homes than free.
Right. The only part, the Park is for those financially, it'll be developed over three months. We only get about $1,000 a year, and we use most of that money just in the day-to-day plumbing, sweeping and things like that. The half mill being increased a couple of years ago brings in around $60,000. So if we need $90,000 on Denison here, 60 would start to come in from that village. You need a lot more than to cover that portion of the Park Street. So remember, if you recall, this year we're doing 50 homes from the curb stop in, in areas that were water mains already replaced.
Right, yeah.
So we took a break this year with water mains. So now we'll switch the water main next year. Because again, a foot of water main is another thing we have to tackle, right? So we're tackling a bunch of water main either way.
Yeah, and how old's the water main? How old is it for like...
Oh, yeah, I think it's 60-some, 70 years, something like that.
It's not so bad.
Right, I've seen pipes from under the ground, hundreds of years old.
Yeah.
Out west where it's dry or something. I haven't seen it, but I've seen places that have to replace that. Again, my only, you know, is the local street fund.
Right, we need the money for the road.
Yes.
Which you have to do at the same time as the water.
And, and so speaking of funding, if you recall, we had two of the rental offices that opened last year with the state tallying it up in the fiscal year. We got that funded in February this year, and that was like $103,000. We have currently, I think, four open. Potentially a fifth one ready before the September, end of September fiscal year. So not knowing what per establishment cost or tax amount would be, that will help get us a little bit ahead. We could earmark that and put it off to the local street funds.
Revenue, revenue is up right now.
We also have some earmark, so we gotta set that for our own parking lot, right?
Yeah.
Now the profits. Axide's taxes down dramatically from last year.
Yeah.
The sales revenue. Revenue's up for recreational.
Well, we have some new ones coming in that township approved that are gonna compete with ours, so we're gonna lose some.
Yeah, so we're gonna get a few of these for a few years and then they're gonna fall off.
Yeah. So you're looking for...
Direction as which one we're gonna have.
Which one?
Which one we want to have engineered and then put together. It won't block bid by January, February. And we put them off to all the bid books. We had six bidders, I think, at our parking lot project. We had, I can't remember how many for our, our parking. But several, because again, they put out like a lot of bids.
You gotta pick which one you want to pursue, Terry.
I was in the same thinking as Nikosia. I thought we got it, who knows, we'll go with the more...
And the 19 homes.
Yeah.
If the waterfront, if the local street fund doesn't have enough to fund it, then you transfer from your job fund into it. To, you know.
Yeah.
The water fund is doing good. Again, we have another couple of years, another bond we've got. We've had two bonds in the last two, two or three years that were costing $200,000 a year that fall off. Or both are, right?
Yeah.
Right, so that's why...
We have another one that's gonna fall off.
Yeah, a couple more years.
Yeah.
That's one we share with the DDA, I think it's a couple more years. 29% DDA, seven more thousand, something like that.
Okay.
I mean, but it is double though, right?
Again, it is. Yeah, it's a lot more water main, a lot more homes.
A lot more driving road space that needs to be fixed.
Again, if you did one year, you would probably want to do the next following year. So it's kind of like...
No time like the present. I say we go for more, but that's me.
It's not getting cheaper to do it every year.
No. Do you have a motion for that?
I can do that.
During public comment, you can, which will be coming up soon. Thanks. Okay, I'll move to, let me figure out what I'm moving on here.
I didn't click. Did you get my one on that one?
No worries. Okay, I'll move to proceed with the lead service line, water main and road project for Park Street.
Mechanic to...
Mechanic to Pontiac. Is there a second?
Yes, support.
Okay, so motion made by Cook, seconded by Borjo. Any discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Cook?
Yes.
Nikosia?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Borjo?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, the water plant filter tank painting and water power washing.
So this is one of those purchasing situations we dealt with. Luckily, these aren't anywhere near our sealed bid process. And this was, some of the prices we gathered, they're on the very front page there from last Halloween, actually. We had to reach out and get them updated. They are, I had to update the ones in there. But there were two things. We have the tanks that stick up, the big square tanks stick to the roof on the water plant. You see that they're brown and the paint is peeling out of them. So they, we've been talking about them for a year or two. And then, we did mention last fall, it was healthy, about able to wash a power, a power washer or tower. We're even, I don't know, the price, I was surprised how low it was.
Yeah, the township's had a great job power washing their towers. The other, other village one.
Yes, and so we got, we got a price for it last fall, but we're kind of really too late to act on it. And so, yeah, we do have that in there. And they've dealt with some of these players in the past as well. The one thing I did leave this old sheet with the paint violating on it from last year, gives us an idea of the cleaning, the exterior... There was another one in here about the, maybe I didn't put the complete painting. Oh, that was another page that I pulled. Because I guess in a couple of years, we're gonna do the interior and exterior, both painting and...
Approximately.
Yeah, and I think the guy's price was only $55,000. I'm surprised, we had asked him a couple of years ago, we're gonna find out. So basically, you have H2O towers with their painting price and FEDO. And I did a little spreadsheet on the back that one happened to be lower, on the painting, one happened to be lower on the power washing. Even if you put them together and you want to get them hope to do it, you're gonna obtain more. So by dividing it up, we save one thing. And they can do the power washing right away, but the tanks, they want to wait till they're gonna be hot weather.
Right, okay.
Won't be long.
Won't be long.
Any questions from council? Any motion on this one? Okay, I'm gonna move to direct the village manager to award the repainting of the two filter tanks to H2O Towers LLC for a amount of $6,750. And then award the power washing cleaning of the water tower to FEDO Incorporated at a amount of $4,400. Is there a second?
Aye.
Cook, Nikosia, any discussion, questions, comments? Any none, roll call vote, please.
Nikosia?
Yes.
Borjo?
Yes.
Yes.
Cook?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. So 10, there's no items, it's on agenda. 11 is public comment. So if anyone would like to address council, please feel free to step up to the podium. And would you like to step up?
I, I just, when you were going back and forth about Park and Denison.
Okay.
I was like praying, because I live on Park.
Okay.
I'm right at Park and Mechanic, so...
Okay, did you write the letter earlier this year? Okay.
No, I didn't know. I just read this on Facebook that the meeting was tonight, and stuff.
So you're happy right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a lot of landscaping, so I just was wondering about that. Do they bore in?
Yeah.
Is that, okay, cool.
He'll have, he'll dig down in the front somewhere, dig down and get it over into there. But he, like I said, I don't think we've ever, I know we haven't had to replace any shrubs to date, and he's...
You'll know where it happened, but it won't, it won't require.
We haven't replaced any shrubs or sidewalk. And he's done, he did, he took a picture of them this year, he's already done about another 50 years. So it's like the total of the last couple of years.
Doesn't really contribute.
Very, what kind of changes to the contractor, we're keeping.
And you redo the road after, that's all part of that.
Yeah, now, let me, let me break back and we, and step back on that. The contractor that I'm referring to is one that's go around doing the individual ones. He won't be bidding on this large project, so he won't be the one doing that work.
Right.
That would be the larger contractor, like Lashawal, or did all those ones. Again, they only did about eight or nine on this project. But yeah, they're all responsible for, they're responsible for restoration, everything for that project.
Yeah, everything will be put back just like it was.
Or better in some cases.
Yeah, I was gonna say better than Park is right now.
Yes, yeah, the road will be put back much better, that would be...
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else for public comment? Kelly?
Hey, Freddie, I just wanted to make a comment on the Weckel update. So the whole reason for that meeting is because the DDA did bring somebody interested in purchasing the second floor of the Weckel property that we actually sought out to bring to Mr. Weckel. So we are really trying to work with him and fill those spaces to help out as much as we can. Within that discussion, a contractor was able to come down and meet with Joe, myself and Mr. Weckel that day about the parking lot. And it was, after discussing all of it, that a recommendation to move forward would be that week to at least sign the contract and get on their schedule, because at this point in time, they're at mid-September for scheduling. So if the contract was not signed that week, then we would be pushing out further than that. And we know that if we get into October, we're then facing weather again, just like we were last year. So again, the project would not be done. This is more than just a back and forth and us wanting a project done. We have an event center that's about to open this winter, and we really need that parking. It is crucial to the downtown businesses that are already there and existing, especially in that area, that we have additional parking so that their businesses don't suffer. If we go back to the bid process, like Mr. Weckel mentioned tonight, then we will not have this done. We should have had a signed contract three weeks ago with this company that he contacted. This was not somebody that we contacted. And at least gotten on their schedule so that we could move forward with this project. We also asked that the light poles, to make sure that those were purchased and on order, because we know that things are so backed up, and those have not been ordered. So I think that we need to be pushing harder and we need to be having things in writing to be holding people accountable to get this project done. And that's for the businesses. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment? We'll move on then to committee reports. Noda, more any updates?
No July meetings.
Oh, yeah.
I have one minute.
Great, thank you. Planning commission, cable commission, I know Bo is absent. Any updates, Mr. Redore, you want to share on those two?
Nope, the planning commission just had that one item about the zoning issue.
Yep. Great, thank you. DDA, Director Westwood, would you like to step up and give an update for me on that one? Appreciate you.
For sure. DDA's been quite busy. If you have not gone and seen behind red snaps in that northeast pod, please go after this, because it'll be lit up. So we did a skyline lighting on the back as well as the drake lighting. Everything is finished except for just the center arch that says Downtown Oxford, and that should be done by next week. But the remainder of the stamped concrete went in yesterday, so it looks really nice. And we went over and placed the furniture. The, my two staff members and myself went out and did all of the mulching, and it looks really, really nice over there. We are cleaning up a couple more areas. We were outside today, just moving some things around, scooting some bike racks, just trying to make the walkability a little bit nicer. We have two more concerts and two more markets left. And we have a, two new events coming up. We have the Lake Orion-Oxford Tailgate that's coming up on September 8th in Washington Square. That's gonna be a great event to bring business downtown. And then we also are having our trolley park roll, and that is a stronger together with Lake Orion. So you'll see sales coming up on Friday, those will go live. And then we have, trolley is running consistently, so still that Friday and Saturdays. And we have had huge feedback for our scarecrow fest coming up on October 1st. And we actually had to add in another vendor space, because we already had 50 people signed up to be vendors. So we anticipate that event being absolutely huge. And we're going to look to run the trolley to the Oxford Market area for additional parking, since we don't have enough downtown currently. Everything else is going great. We're still applying for additional grants and should find out about the MTC grant, that's the really large one, in early September is what we're being told.
That's it. Thank you so much, I appreciate that. Polly, any trade-offs?
No, I'm delighted.[1730.34]
No reply, okay. Manager staff, the attorney report, Mr. Dory?
Um, just a couple of things. But down the ramp, they sent me a picture today, late this afternoon, we did a water line replacement, uh, North Glasty, uh, from the curb stop and it had already been replaced. Two sections of the pipe that holes in about the size of a painting. So, you know, when we did our water liability study, you know, produce ten, ninety gallons of water, you build nine, you wonder where it's all going, right? We know there's sometimes a small minor leak here and there. This was pretty sizable. The ground was wet outside the home and that's a little bit of an ass line, so throughout this process, by clearing those, A, it's helping to float the house, it's getting much better flow, um, as well as us tightening up the system. It does go well. Um, I was approached, a gentleman, I think it was today or yesterday, a few years ago, there's a veteran suicide awareness project called Rock Pack. They, they walked down their road. He approached, he just wanted to give up some flyers and he asked about putting a flyer being sent in a park for about a week or so. I just wanted, didn't want to conflict with anything going on in that park at that time. There wasn't, um, I would go up Liberty Weekend, I think September sixteenth is the date of the event. I think it's an important event, so I was gonna give information, put in the flyer over, or about the interrupt, block or fence or anything. Issue with that. Um, and then there was a note on here, I think Terry put it on or maybe I did last month, about the ballot box outside the village offices. I've been in back for those, uh, quick write about state elections, uh, the drop boxes and things like that, and he asked about putting one out here. The state would cover the cost, A, the drop box and B, the monitoring cameras and equipment. Obviously, we're a precinct here and it's a, given that we would allow the drop box here, I assume. But that they handle the elections, they handle the tourism, as the precincts, that would be the spot and they would handle that and the state would.
Cook writes very on top of things. I'm assuming they'll be clear sighted because the confusion could be we're the village of Oxford, but someone, another precinct in the township votes here.
I, I don't know what the rules are. I'm sure there's rules that say there's some, or left his hand in place.
Because I could see.
You only, you know, drop boxes. And, and I don't know if it matters. If you put them in there, they take them back.
As long as they all work the same.
I don't know, I don't know.
Well, speaking from the clerk's position, um, that happens all the time. Even when you don't have drop boxes, things go wrong precinct and they have a process for that. Uh, so these drop boxes though, I'm sure will be for any ballot. It's just that because this is a precinct area where village voters might get convenient for them, that would encourage them to drop their ballots here. I don't know the exact process because I'm not directly involved in elections right now, but that's, that is something that they can handle very easily.
Thank you. Clerk, any, any other things?
Uh, no, we're, we're in audit prep, uh, time right now, so I guess some of you, or at least one of you that I know of has been getting, um, some docu-signing things. They, they do, um, in their due diligence, send out requests for, um, you know, fraud detection, um, processes and things of that nature. It's a random selection, so if you get tagged on something like that, it's not because they're singling you out, it's just that it's a random process and your name was pulled out of the hat, so, um, if you have any questions, you can call me. I'm gonna run interference for you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Davis?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council comments, start at the end.
First of all, thank you to Jacob for your new position on C V A, so I didn't have to. And I meant to bring this up earlier, so I've talked to you guys ahead of time, so I'm sorry to spring this on during comments. But, um, as far as the memorial, and I, I know that the kids are going busy and, um, I, I know that when they're ready, they will come to us, but, um, it's going to be fall and I was wondering if maybe next meeting we can discuss us just going with a small tree thing. I think we, I kind of talked about going before, not in their space, so it's not something that has to be taken up and redone, but, um, if we can talk about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We want that on the agenda.
Yep.
Yeah, we could put that on the agenda, just something small.
It's a good time for you to do it too.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
Thanks for the Z V A. I do have a contact at NASA where we may be able to get a tree that's been around the moon. So I'll look into that as well too. Seems like it might be a really good opportunity for something like that. But they have to study it first. Um, it's kind of, so I gotta figure out the timeline and whatnot.
Make sure it's not you.
That's the thing, right?
Almost a tree there.
And if a billion years old now.
Yeah.
I think so.
Uh, I just want to say I think that, uh, village is doing great things. I think the things that we're looking at, and Mr. Davis, you brought this up too, so we're gonna give you credit for recognizing all that our little village does as far as, you know, purchasing policies and our water main replacements, our road work, you know, we're doing a lot in the village. The D D A is a huge part of that. Obviously, downtown, it looks absolutely amazing. Every time you go through it, it's just better and better.
She's a lot of fun stuff.
Yeah. So just kind of well done to, done to everyone. I know we've had comments before that, you know, what are you doing? But we're actually doing quite a bit all the time. So I appreciate everyone, so. Um, with that, I'll leave it there and we'll move to adjourn at eight fifty-nine. Wow, we missed.
Whoa, we missed.